And.
There you go.
I've got a shot of that before. I'll go ahead and call the town council study committee meeting to order at three oh one, uh, just to get started. We'll establish form. So just to go around the room really quick. Curtis, Jill, Bo, Jeff is here. Joe?
I'm here.
Tom?
He's here.
And, um. I can physically see Donna, so I'll count her as here.
Hi.
All right. So moving on, just to put accept it from the agenda.
I'll move.
Second.
All right. Move by Curtis, seconded by Jill. Uh, Curtis, hi, Jill.
Hi.
Bo.
Hi.
Joe.
Hi.
Huh?
Hi.
Chair vote time and, uh, vice chair vote time and moving on. So just a quick note to everybody. Uh, cause I have to that this is being recorded and we'll get posted to YouTube in the next few days. Uh, for those who want to watch it. Uh, Joe did distribute a couple sets of minutes, one from January twenty second and one from March the twelfth. Anyone have any comments on either of those?
Oh, move acceptance.
All right. So moved by Curtis. Seconded by Jill. All in favor of Curtis? Hi, Jill?
Hi.
Bo?
Hi.
Joe?
Hi.
Tom?
Hi.
All right. Vice chair votes on. So those are approved. We'll make sure those get to Maureen. Now we're trying to get caught up on those. Uh, and then next on the agenda was the review Joe sent out again, uh, the latest draft of the town and county draft charters for town council. For kind of our final one over before sharing with town admin and ultimately with KP. Does anyone have any comments or questions? All right, Curtis?
Well, I've reviewed them. I've got a bunch of notes, um. But the main thing is I don't see the sewer commission, which is now the board of select, uh, select board. And my recommendation would be that you just continue this, the council as the sewer commission. And then they can decide how to proceed after that. But with that, I do not see it in there.
You want to keep the council as a sewer commission?
Well, for now, so we don't have to rewrite.
To rewrite the draft.
I'm sure, yeah, I'm sure that they will have some discussion. Um, I did redline a couple of things. Um, I'm not disagreeing. I just note the town manager doesn't have to be a resident until six months later than you have to. Heads of town administrate on page seven, heads of town administration departments shall appoint and hire the person of their respective departments. Is that the way you do it now? You hire and, and, um, as a department head, or does that have to go through some other hearing?
Currently, the way that system works is we make the hiring decisions. Ultimately, that turns into a hiring recommendation and the town manager in effect rubber stamps it. I've never had one come back as a no.
Yep.
But there's a final say at the admin level for hiring, but it's usually.
Well, on page seven C, it states that heads of town departments shall, shall appoint and hire. So I'm just noting that as part of going through this. I spent a couple hours on this. Um, and then appropriate on page eight appropriations required by contract shall be subject to approval of town council. I guess that's pretty routine. Then under article four on page nine, elected offices. The listing does not include the shellfish advisory, although there's a reference to it later. And I think we agreed that it would be, uh, elected. Is that right, Jim?
Yeah, we did it the last meeting.
Okay, so that needs to be corrected in this real good gadget. On eleven, I don't know if the HTC associate members, three associate members, uh, appointed by the town manager. Is that the policy now that somebody, the HTC is elected and then their three associates appointed?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
The same.
Housing Authority. Five met three from voters, one from the Commonwealth and one from the Housing Authority ten. Is that current?
On CPC?
No, uh, Housing Authority.
I think we have to have that person.
No, I believe that hasn't changed.
That's the same. All right. Again, I'm, I'm just looking at.
Oh, I, I think, I mean, I think these are all good gets, um, but I, I'm, I'm fairly confident that Collins, um, you know, Anthony and company just copied whatever our current, you know, since we've been pretty consistent about don't change, don't change it if we don't need to. So I'm assuming that these all reflect the current structure.
Okay, so I'm going to twelve on CPC. Uh, a designate from a lot of agencies and two members elected from voters at large. We're assuming that's consistent.
Well, Tom can weigh in on that. You have nine person board now, Tom?
That's correct. That's exactly the same as this now.
Okay, fine.
Great.
Um, I, uh, the purpose of doing this was from, for me to make sure that we were fairly consistent. And then, um, the school committee on page fifteen, um, there are dates for budgets for the school committee, March fifteen, town manager, May one. Town council budget, June fifteen and capital improvement, not later than May one. Again, I'm just looking to be that we're comfortable and consistent.
Yeah, I mean, that's what that budget process is. I think with the town councils, it's slightly different.
And then on seventeen, there was a comment um, from Collins that the committee has to decide when nomination papers are available and due and all that. Did you see that?
Yeah, but I think the clerk just gets guidance from the state on that. In fact, she just changed all that in the middle of the process.
Okay, um. And then in, on article eight on seventeen, uh, we're looking at the two hundred numbers to get petitions and there's a hundred on eighteen. Again, I just assuming these are all things that we
are stage or?
Uh, doing. And then there is, um, on nineteen, insert a fair concise summary prepared by town attorney. And the same thing appears on twenty. Getting there. Periodic review of the chair charter every year ending in a five. That's, I guess, rule. And I think maybe I shot my Y. There is on twenty six, the last item B. An incumbent member of the board of the select board is elected to council and how that follows through. Oh, and then, then on twenty seven, section ten nine, that's where harbor and shellfish advisory appears again, Jeff. So. And, uh, there is also on twenty eight, a reference to capital program and audit committee. Just making sure they're all where we want them to be and how they're doing and that's it.
Could you email those too? Or those just redlined on that?
I'll give you this copy.
That'd be great.
I printed two copies of everything, so.
Not, I can scan it in.
You don't have to.
Well, more importantly, I can scan it in.
You can do it. I just. Uh, and I, I looked at the, um, county charter and it looked like it was so bland and homogenized. I didn't try to do anything to that.
Go ahead, Joe?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I'm, I'm assuming that when we give these to Libby and what, I don't know when KP will actually take a look at them. I presume it will be after town meeting in the, on the, in the election, um. But I don't think there's any way we're going to get through KP review without them, you know, dotting i's and crossing t's and raising issues for us to react to. So, uh, I just want to make sure that, that what we pass along, you know, reflects as closely as closely as we can all remember what we decided and discussed in a variety of meetings. So, and you know, Curtis, your review, that was just walking through. I, I basically, I have two things. One, the, the issue of the sewer commission, um. And where, you know, where does that fall? Does that still stay with the town, with, do the town councillors, uh, become the sewer commission? Um, and the issue of switching the, the shellfish board back to being elected. But I think I think everything else sounded like kind of nits and nets.
All right, Curtis?
Um, in, in my, uh, dreams, what will happen is, um, to keep a sewer commission going, it would roll over to the council. And then the council can amend the regulation, uh, on their own initiative to establish a joint sewer water commission, which David Gray would like and Mark Willett would like. And it would, because every time sewer does something that affects water. And if water needs to do it, they got to check with sewer. So. But I see that as evolving. It just rolls over and let the council figure it out. But there'll be the sewer commission in the absence, because we haven't established one.
I'm sorry that I was late. I, I don't know if you guys talked about the, um, shellfish. Um, that they had wanted to be elected. Oh, you did?
Yeah.
Okay. So what, what did you, what did you guys decide?
I think at the last meeting, we decided that we would move them back to how they are now back to election.
Yeah, that's what I was hoping.
I think that's good.
Yeah.
Yeah. My only point about the sewer is that because of the bedroom issue, like to me, that is fairly political issue. So I do, like, I hear the council, it, it's better if the council kind of decides how they want to do me that. But all of a sudden that becomes a very different board if they're determined bedroom count.
I understand. I agree with you. So keep, keep at it.
No, you, your edits were just, they were perfect.
All right. Any other comments on the, the drafts? I guess before we entertain a motion to send those to town admin, any comments from the public on the drafts?
Well, you know what, actually, um, is the, is the charter, um, going to be online for people to look at?
It was supposed to be, but yes, we'll, we'll definitely make sure it gets posted.
Where on there?
On the town council study committee webpage.
Oh, yes.
All right. Well, I guess.
Uh, Jeff, if, Jeff, if I might.
Yes, go ahead.
Oh, um, I don't know. I had, um, emailed Joe this morning about, um, conversing with, uh, Mandy Jo Henneke, um, who is the Amherst Town Councilor regarding her comments about residents and so forth. Uh, is this Joe or Jeff? Is this when I should bring it up? A clarification of what she was saying at the Civic League presentation about residents and voting, non-voting, um, participants and so forth.
Bring it up.
Okay.
Frank Cliffs.
Let's see where it is. And if it doesn't fit in this section, we'll decide where it fits.
Okay, thank you. Um, she said that, um, the residence is really voting and non-voting people. And, um, she defined residence as not necessarily registered voters. Residents and non-residents are participating in their government committees. Um, and she gave an example at that last presentation and she mentioned it again today, um, citing, uh, FinCom where they have, um, voters and non-voters, non-registered voters on the committee. One thing they did do for the non-registered voters on committees is they still took, um, a tally. So you might have the voters doing five to one on an issue. And then you'd have the, uh, non-voters and they might say three to one, but they did record that. But she said that, um, when they were preparing the charter, which is why I wanted to bring this up. She referred to, um, article nine in their new charter, which states residents and non-voters are welcome to apply for committee positions. And they do. Um, and she suggested if we were to consider including something like this verbiage in, um, our charter. She said voting residents or property owners are welcome to apply for non-voting positions on town committees. But I would add also non-commercial slash corporate property owners not being included. Uh, and that was the, the sum total of the conversation this morning. It was a clarification. And also how they include their non-voting, uh, taxpayers. Sorry, it's my dog.
But may I clarify, she never said they were voting members. They could sit in and participate, but they were not voting members.
That's correct. They were not, um, sorry if I, they were not voting members, but they could be, and they were welcome on many committees. But no, they are not voting members.
Okay. And again, it's, they were not voting members of the committee that they volunteered for. They, they, um, as well as being non-voting residents of Amherst. So.
That's correct. Yeah.
I'm trying to make, because this was our, that was the confusing thing, right? Was, are they, were they non-voting vis a vis the committee? Or they were non-voting as, as non-voting, say a non-voting taxpayer or a non-registered?
Right. She used it, uh, broadly residents, but then she clarified it, um, uh, quoting the, uh, article nine. And that's how they were able to include a lot of non-voting or non-registered, uh, voters.
Okay.
And they considered it property owners. Which I would suggest is something we should consider at this point, or if not in the future.
You mean to write that down in the charter?
Yeah, I'm suggesting it. I mean, if you look at Amherst, it's all inclusive. It's very democratic.
Well.
They're including taxpayers. We don't have, the taxpayers don't have a vote per se, but they are included in the community and in the town government.
All right, Jill?
So we already have people here that do apply for these boards now. And I think they're voting members. I think, Tom, you, you've appointed people who
Sure.
are not registered voters to be on boards here.
Hmm, we didn't.
It doesn't happen a lot, but it does happen. You, you can especially look at when people apply for the SBPF.
Um, well, I, I agree, but I think it should be included in the charter. I think the verbiage should be, uh, clarified.
But you're saying property owners. I mean, I, one of the things that we all think discussed and liked about going to a town council is we feel like there are a lot of parts of our community that aren't represented, but they're not necessarily property owners. And they're not necessarily voters.
But they can.
I'm, I'm saying something different. I'm saying broadly speaking, there should be some verbiage in the charter, encouraging property owners, non-voting taxpayers, however you want to phrase it, should be included in the charter. That's what I'm suggesting.
Uh, Donna, do you have a copy of this, uh, article nine of the Amherst Charter? Cause did you get?
Find it and I'll, uh, email it to you.
Did you just send it to me and I'll circulate it? And, and I, I mean, I think, um, you know, I think modifying the draft charter to, uh, sort of explicitly include non-voting taxpayers, I don't know, you know, o- other residents of the town, non-voting residents of the town. Um, I just think it's something I'd like to read the charter, make sure I understand what Amherst has done. I think the rest of us on the committee should read the charter and then let's talk about it at another meeting and just, you know, we're not, we're certainly at a point where if we, if we decide we want to make that modification, we could, um. I'm just not sure we should try to do it here this afternoon.
Thank you. Okay, I'll get it to you, Joe.
I, I guess I would answer that too, right? I don't think even if we decide to send this to start for administration and council review, that if that's a point that gets brought forward later, I don't even think that that's prohibitive to that other process running.
What, what do you mean?
I think if, if we decided today that we wanted to send the charter as is to town admin and KP to begin their review. If later we said we wanted to add this provision, I don't think that that would alter that process other than having to review some separate language.
At least we can submit it for consideration.
I agree. That process. Go ahead, Tom.
Just searching their charter real quick. It doesn't look like there's anything in their charter other than non-voting liaisons, which is the town council may select from among its membership, non-voting liaisons to multiple, multi-member bodies, the school committee and the library trustees. My guess is this, this is a, a rule that the council has as courtesy.
Yeah, like their own internal.
I, I'm not sure, but this was a quote, direct quote from her. So I'll pull it, um, and I'll, I'll send it to Joe.
This side, Caroline. Point, point of clarification, Donna, you, there was something you said last sentence when you were kind of presenting the idea. And it was about, um, um, commercial owners. I didn't, can you just repeat that?
Oh, um, Carolyn, basically I would exclude, um, commercial owners, corporate owners. Um, Mandy Jo did not, but I, I would. We wouldn't want a particular group, I don't think, serving on committees, uh, you know. It's up to everybody.
Oh, did Mandy give any examples of the types of people who sat on those committees?
Uh, she said, uh, she specifically had mentioned FinCom in that presentation, um, a couple, a couple of weeks ago. And that there were at least one member who, um, was a, um, a non-voting or, or not registered vote, voting person.
Well, she gives me images.
What? What'd you say?
Curtis made an off color.
I didn't hear it. Come on.
Oh, that's all right. You don't want to.
Hey, guys, wait till I come. All right. Um, anyway.
Okay, now wait a second. For democratic purposes, we do need to say what that word was, and it was Musk. And I think that gets at the heart of some of these, uh, for the discussion that we're putting off.
Okay, it's nuts, but it, it has to be considered.
I don't, I, I don't think on the commercial level, I don't see how that works. We have a lot of individual businesses owned by people that are considered corporate. They're all considered corporate because they're all in LLCs. Um, in fact, all of our STRs here are LLCs and the property owners. So I don't see how we can include particular.
You know, I understand. Then just strike that one and just say property owners. I was just trying, I just threw that in as far as, uh, uh, corporate and that sort of thing that we wouldn't include, but property owners are property owners.
Yeah, they don't, we, we, the, the, the United States got rid of that provision a really long time ago where you would only be a property owner to vote. Now you kind of want to say you, you want us to be a property owner to be on a committee. I understand where you're coming from and I think you have that avenue now. That's all I want you to understand. I feel like there's nothing prohibiting you all from applying for boards now, for people that.
Actually, I'm an example of it. And we have a number of members of non-voting taxpayers on other committees. I'm just saying, I, I would like the committee to consider putting something to that effect into the charter as it's being prepared and as Amherst has done. That's all.
Yeah, I think you said Amherst didn't do that.
Well.
It's not in their.
Amherst did do that, according to Mandy, who was a town councillor in Amherst. And we had that conversation today. I'll pull the article number nine for Joe and he can circulate it.
Yes, I just say, if you have language you'd like included and an example, just provide it for us to review and consider. I think we can take that up at a subsequent meeting when we have that information. So.
Yes.
Talking in hyperbole. Okay. So I guess back to the question at hand on the agenda item, are we satisfied with the charter with the couple of changes that Curtis circulated around being shared with town admin or we have some work we still feel we want to?
I'm suggesting, I'd like to see this thing. Um, how about deferring that till next meeting?
Sure. Well, we can make those changes.
I, I mean, we can turn it up, um, and then if there are any minor revisions and if Anthony has to answer that red flag question. Uh, but I, I'd like to have it available for our next meeting to forward.
Sure.
Well, we're gonna need something for the, the forms that we have soon.
Yeah. All right, so anyone else have any thoughts on that? We just want to carry this agenda item to the next meeting?
Um, I, I would argue against that, to be honest. I, I think we're at a point where we can give these two charters to, to Libby and K, I, I don't think candidly, I don't think KP laws are gonna look at it. I mean, they're, they've got to be flat out with town meeting and the, and the election, uh, but I think it's, you know, time to sort of give them a copy to work with. And then, um, I think we should put copies up on the website so that the public can see it. And, um, and I'm sure we'll get some questions on it at these user sessions that we're talking about.
I agree.
No problem. I personally.
You know, I.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, I think that, I think the issue that Donna brought up is, is an interesting one. I don't know how we're all going to come out on it, but it certainly is, Jeff said, it's, it's a modification we can make, you know, that this thing still isn't final. So we're can, we can always tweak it weeks down the road.
No, I just say, and I agree. I think the more eyes we can get to it and start to reviewing it, I think the better. And then there's going to be.
Posted as a draft or near or final draft for common or something that explains it's not locked in yet.
I think we'd always would label a draft until, I mean, I think you label a draft until
A draft.
If you're a, a town meeting warrant, and then that's kind of set until that process runs.
I think it would help to move it into the next status so that when we're doing the public meetings, it can be viewed as something that's already passed through to that.
We need a motion.
Sure. That always helps to have nice folks.
I move that we move it wherever you want.
Okay. Second. Second. All right. So, man, said goodbye Curtis and Jill. I guess all in favor, I'll just go around. I'll start with Curtis since you made the motion.
I.
Jill?
Hi.
Caroline?
Hi.
Bo?
Hi.
Tom?
Hi.
Joe?
Hi.
Kelly?
Hi.
All right, vice chair votes on. So I, there's, we'll send it on to admin and KP and make sure we get it posted for public review and put it up for people to see.
All right. It's working every now and then they get on there and it's, it's not.
We'll make sure someone gets there. They will even try to get, uh, like a banner announcement that has been posted on the landing page for the town. Should be.
We're getting a lot of banners like tomorrow's review, um, of Highland Home and then the DPW review and they're, they're popping those big things up.
Yeah, so we can always request, uh, Florencia to maybe even post a link on the town socials that it's up and available.
Yeah, that'd be good.
I should be good. I, I just want to say congratulations, everybody. That, that was actually a milestone. When you think about it, that was a milestone decision we just made. Uh, that's, that represents over a year's worth of work and meetings to come up with draft charters for the town and the county. So it's, it's a hurdle. There's still work to do, but there's a, that's a big hurdle.
All right, Joe, I'm gonna kind of let you lead the discussion on this next section. Uh, I'll obviously still chair it, but just to update uh, on the discussion for voting outreach plans prior to the non-binding annual town meeting and ballot questions. And, uh, I know you've been working on scheduling some info sessions. I don't know if you had a update or comment on that?
Yeah, um, I hope I've got this right, but you know, thanks to Caroline and, um, I know Curtis checked on, um, I, I think Curtis looked into this, but I think we're, we've ended up with three dates and I'm going a little bit from memory. It's a Thursday. I think it's Thursday, the tenth, Saturday, the twelfth and Monday, the fourteenth. Um, for information sessions, the Thursday, the tenth is in the community room. I want to say five to seven or six to eight. I don't remember. Um, then Saturday morning, ten till noon in the community room. And then Caroline, I think that the next, that Tuesday, the fourteenth is at the Athenaeum, right? In one of their meeting rooms?
Yeah, I just need to double confirm, which I will do right away.
Okay, I've confirmed the tenth and the twelfth with Robin Dugan, who, so I think we've got that room, um. And, um, and then obviously the, the, you know, if we can confirm the Athenaeum, uh, I really haven't thought too much about the agenda, but I was, um, uh, you know, clearly we, we should, as we did in our sessions last October, I, I think, you know, kind of an overview of what, what, what we're all about, what we've decided upon. But then I also think that it would be worth trying to have some more specific information in our little beginning presentation on, um, opportunities for the public to, um, to question or to, um, I guess dispute decisions of the town council. I, I think that's something that people are going to be curious about. Um, and then I know Jill, you've, you've mentioned this issue about how the planning board works and how it's going to work. Um, and so I think, and I think we've actually got a, uh, some outlines that the Collins, Collins Center did for us on how the planning board might operate or planning issues might, might be dealt with. And I thought somehow modifying or, or. And I thought somehow modifying or, or, um, you know, putting that together as, and part of, in one, either all three of these sessions, or maybe have a little different twist on each of the three sessions that we can, um, um, you know, raise that content. So tho- those three sessions I think are, are done, and we ought to, you know, actually have to move pretty, pretty quickly here, because the tenth, twelfth, and, and the fourteenth are only about a week and a half, two weeks away. Um, and then the other issue, that, I'm sorry, good, that, any other, any questions, comments, you know, thoughts?
Um, there was also the question of, uh, FinCom versus a Ways and Means Committee someplace in there, because the, uh, charter says FinCom's gonna disappear.
It's fine. I don't know that.
But I like the Ways and, uh, somebody's gotta talk about budgets, don't they?
There's still capital, there's about it, I think.
Okay. No, I think people have a, a very strong opinion about it. FinCom is being, you know, one of the backbones of how things work.
Well, and, and in Barstool, it's a Ways and Means Committee. The council appoints a Ways and Means Committee to review budget requests like FinCom.
Yeah, it's something that's been in the charter, that was my point. I, I'm open to that, I just thought, let the council set it up the way it needs to.
It was a question that was, it was an open question, and that's why I raised.
What do you think?
I think, I agree with Jill, I think that's.
I think they do need a capital, because that's money in the fly of it. I think.
I'm, I'm thinking more optics than people just wanting to, because we are changing things, and it does need to be spelled out what is being changed, I think, for people to get their minds around the transition.
We, the legislative is becoming the, it's, it controls the purse strings currently, you just don't do it, so. The Ways and Means will do that.
Yeah, no, I understand.
And the town council will do that.
I understand, and thinking more about, yeah.
Alright, go ahead, Jill.
Well, it gets a little confusing because, you know, you've got the way, do it now, the budget really just is presented by the CFO's office. Right? So there's no budget committee who's helping put that together, it's done by staff. You know, so the Ways and Means Committee, what is their purview? The Finance Committee really looks at the want, that's really what they do. They don't, they get to see the budget and they get to see the school committee budget and all that, but like, what's this Ways? A Ways and Means Committee sounds good to me. I just don't think it's gonna be anything like the Finance Committee, I think, so we probably need to verify a little bit what that means, that's what I mean. Are they gonna look at the budget, that there is a capital committee, but at some point that would need to appear.
Well, it would be, it would be something where the council could refer a question to the Ways and Means Committee for a more detailed discussion. If they chose.
Yeah, but are they looking at? Getting, are they looking at the budget and the spending? Like, are they looking at both? Their revenue and the spending, like, I'm just saying that.
I'm not sure.
Yes. So, you can go ahead and hit it up.
So, yes.
Yeah, the, that's what Barstool does, but there was.
Yeah, because the legislative would do that. Because it's the legislative, and that would have to go, you'd have to be presented a budget, legislature would review it.
Oh, yeah.
Look at. Well, that's what they do now, but we're saying if you have the Ways and Means Committee, it's gonna go through the Ways and Means Committee first.
No, they could refer to Ways and Means, they may not.
Yeah, but we've kind of, it's there as a, at a level of process that they don't have now, is my point.
Yes.
And I'm okay with that, I just didn't know if it would be in the charter, but I'm okay with it.
So like on your, when I look at the FinCom meetings, you guys are just voting on the articles that are coming in.
We are.
So you're saying that there's, yeah, so you're just voting, saying, look, here's Article Eight, as is approved. I mean, that's.
And then you have that. Always agree with all the, the votes from the planning board, or we don't always agree, Slough Board had an article this year, we didn't agree with it, so it's just different. The Ways and Means Committee, I think, could be helpful to town council, so I think you're right. And they could look at this budget process before, but.
It's a tool that's available, it's not mandatory, but it's a tool that could be used.
Well, I think, again, just for my thoughts on it, it's the council's gonna have needs that the council's gonna figure out, and as soon as they figure out what level of help and review that they're gonna need, and I, I agree with Jill, right, capital's a little bit of a different animal, because that's a you know, raising a prograte or borrowing, or it's, it's a little bit of different function than dealing with existing revenues and its allocations. If they need help in reviewing the budget, they have the ability to form a committee to review it, and that's where Ways and Means comes. If they have a need to review another topic, they can still create a different committee that's not Ways and Means, like,
Right.
I would rather defer to the people and what their needs are than trying to tell them what their needs are in advance.
Okay, well, again.
I, I second what Jeff just said.
Fine.
Yeah. I think it's an important topic, though, so.
Well, he's gonna bone up on this.
It'll come up.
It's gonna be questions. I hate to ask, I've seen your hand come up, and I apologize for not knowing your first name off the top of my mind. Were you just raising your hand just to, just to move? Okay. Just want to make sure you weren't missing a comment or something that was going on. Otherwise, what's your first name again? Michelle, sorry. Try to. Uh.
Yeah, I don't know, Tom, do you think that you guys would want expressly identify Ways and Means Committee in the charter? I mean, we don't have to really define it, other than say, it's, yeah.
I guess I have two thoughts. One is that I'd like to hear from John Giorgio and Lauren Goldberg, or somebody who deals with a lot of charters and a lot of other towns and how it works, including town council, town councils. And, and also, I think there is something to it being in the charter and it being a, let's just say, a statutory, you mean, a mandatory committee as opposed to an ad hoc town council-created committee, because that's a little bit easier to, as Caroline said, for optics and other reasons to possibly slough off. I mean, I'm talking about worst-case scenario, but.
Let's see what Joe here said.
Yeah, but you're fine with us keeping, like, I mean, the capital is in there and the audit committee.
Yeah.
I tell later on the audit committee, that you're fine with capital staying in there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, capital, Capcom is very valuable.
I hope. I rather like that.
You better be careful here, the danger's on.
Well, I can see how the Ways and Means can be really helpful to town councils, so I can go either way, if it's in the charter or not, but I, I can see them setting them up, I think it's smart, smart.
Well, again, we're sending in for feedback. Those questions make a flag for, for discussion.
Yeah.
I think if if John and Boy look at it and say, you guys need to talk about this. I think that one would come back from them.
Fair enough.
Yeah.
We're doing our job here.
Well, it is true, you don't. What I like about the process now is that it, you know, you get several chances to go look at the budget. I mean, Brian has to come before many committees. And he's talking about that, and refining it a little bit, but for the most part, it's pretty established by like Christmas, and then, you know, you have until May third to, to look at it and ask questions. This new process will be, the timeline will be similar, but I think the public involvement will be different, like, is Brian gonna come and, or is the CFO gonna come and appear before town council three times before they vote, or five, or no? It'll kind of get to them, whereas there's not like a public meeting to go to and say, oh, I don't explain this about, you know, the public meeting is the town council meeting, not.
Send it along.
Alright.
Great.
Alright, and then the, next on that was, uh, Joe had just put down letters to the editor. I know, Joe, you had been talking about that. Do you want to update that, too?
Well, I, uh, I, I did write one letter that, um, I think I circulated, I think I circulated to everybody, but if I, if I only did it to a handful of people, I apologize, um. But I think, I think I did send it to the rest of the committee, and, um, I just think that we need to put a few, um, you know, letters out there, um, you know, I'm, I'm happy to tighten up the one that I wrote, I, I know Jill had some comments. But I think if, uh, one or two of the rest of us, um, were to, to write some letters, and, uh, I think we need to get them into the, into the, you know, the inky and the current and the daybreak over the next two weeks, um. I'm sorry, not, not the next two weeks, we, you know, we have until May third, so we're over the next month to get those out there and get our story in front of people again, um. I would also suggest if anybody has ideas for, uh, individuals not on our committee, but, um, you know, support from someone else in the community, and, and another, uh, um, another opinion from someone who isn't necessarily involved in our group, I think that would be positive as well, so.
Curtis?
Um, well, uh, two things. I have started drafting a letter to the editor, but I wanted to let Joe's go first, so I didn't repeat myself. And secondly, um, I've, I've been working a, a little bit on the list of people like Mike Cozart, who we were talking about, uh, inviting to give us some advice on how he reached out to get the school, um, new school through. So, uh, people like Mike, um, are people, I'm, I'm working on a little list, uh, on those two things, a letter and, and a list of people that we could draw on. Welcome to have other.
I, I'm happy to, you know, if you will drop mine, you know, send it out to the, the INM and to, uh, um, the current and daybreak, you know, as soon as everybody says they're happy with it, I'm, I'm ready, you know, it's sort of ready to roll, um. Like I said, I think Jill has had a few comments on the last paragraph, and if any of the rest of you have any edits or preferences, send them along, and I can, I can sort of drop mine, and then we can look to, um, you know, a couple of other letters over the next three to five weeks.
And then, real quickly, just wanted to share with everybody, Rachel, who said she might be late and here by three forty-five, but it's depends on kid pickup. Um, she did say that she had started to draft a few letters, and then I'll, I'll read it, since I wanted to bring up that I had attempted to draft a few letters to be edit around various topics, but find I keep getting stuck in terms of putting my own reasons why instead of collective committee. I do not want to overstep. Then she said, number two topic below is probably the most factual and easier to compose, and then she threw out a couple potential letter topics, I won't go through the, the whole breakdown of all of these. Uh, one she suggested was, uh, makeup of the, the council details, uh, including like number, whether they be at large and, and how they're voted in, and kind of some reasonings behind, you know, compensation and membership. Um, number two is, you know, suggested of maybe having a letter that talks about how the public can be involved and the limitations of public involvement in the current system and the proposed system.
Yeah.
So I'm kind of summarizing her longer stretch here, uh, and then the, the last one that she has, um, is accountability under both systems and the potential impact of special interest groups on both systems. Um, and then she has some points in there that, uh, you know, things like open meeting law still exist, uh, how information can flow in and out, how votes are recorded, um. And, you know, other comments on how special interests might impact, you know, town meeting or council differently, um. Those are the topics that she kind of threw out there. Um, I guess we could probably reach out and say if she has drafts, she could send them into Joe, if he could distribute, and we could comment, or.
I think the more factual the better. What, one of the comments I had to Joe was if we can discuss as a group, and it, it's fine if y'all don't agree with me, I don't actually think we as a committee need to come out and say this is why we want to do it. I think we need to tell them the facts, and that explains what the differences are. Because it's a, it is quite a personal decision for people, and I think the more we make it look like we're like dogmatic and I want to do it, I actually think we're getting a little bit more pushback.
Well, uh, that's interesting, because the letter I'm drafting says this is how you can become, um, more informed and more involved in town council. Uh, I've got three or four examples, like the, um, the green card people who can't go to town meeting now, but they can go to town council. And if you live here, but you can't go to town meeting, you can go to town. These are, so that's the thrust that I've been doing in my draft, is how you can do what you want, and that's what I'm working on.
Yeah.
They can go to town meeting. They can even speak if they get permission.
One person, Kathy Baird. One non-resident, and they're, they can go and sit in the stranger's gallery, but they can't go on the voting floor.
Well, you said can't, so I'm just.
Well, I mean, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm, I know you've got the gallery up there, and you have to be escorted by one of the, um.
Yeah, you've got to wear a.
Well, I, again, I think that, that goes to Jill without.
I'm about to tear today.
You are.
It's a nantucket red.
It is. I think that's where, you know, Jill's thought of making sure that we're sharing how people can be involved in the proposed system. And I, I, I assume some level of familiarity with the existing system. I mean, a little bit of touch on that was probably be fine, but I think more emphasizing on under the proposed form, this is how you can participate.
That's what I'm writing. I've got four or five bullets that started on that.
And how it's different. To some extent, what happens now is everyone's waiting until May third to just like, you know what, I'm just gonna wait till May third, or, you know, whatever town meeting is. And then I'm gonna like, that's my civic duty, that's how I get involved. Of course, there's some wonderful people that get involved a lot more than that. One of the big changes for people is that they're gonna need to pay attention a little more often than what's.
That'll be nice.
Which, yeah, but it's just something we need to kind of they're gonna have to pay attention to.
Well, because they'll be neat, if, if we meet, if the council meets every two weeks, they're gonna have to pay attention if they want to be heard. Instead of sitting back and walking in with a warrant and going through, oh gee, what's that about? At, at the meeting, when they read it for the first time.
Yeah.
I, I.
Alright. Go ahead, Bill. Okay, I have a first.
I just to, um, say about what Jill's comment there, I think that's a great type of, or a letter to the editor, and I hope it comes up in our public meetings, the idea that you know, what functionally will this be like? How's it gonna be different for me, the average voter? Well, you're actually gonna be more involved, and here's how and here's why. It's kind of like a little educative moment where we're kind of explaining the citizens' connection to government, which, you know, maybe it's gotten fuzzy and we're, we're trying to sharpen that up, so I think that's a great letter, and that's factual.
Cool. Yeah?
Oh. So are you saying that as the committee, we shouldn't be politically active, or should, but should we be more active as individuals? Or less?
My own personal read on how, this is just my own like PR brain and in having lived here for much shorter time than you have, but I don't feel like people love being told what to think here. Think they view their independence. So, if we're just informing them and saying, hey, we put this committee together, the Slough Board appointed this committee through a citizens' warrant, well, it came about through a citizens' warrant, but I think that's probably one of the most powerful things we can say, actually. And that the voters affirmed that, right? And the more that we can keep saying this is really for you to decide, because that's true, I think that's a better message, and that's kind of what we're saying, that we want to keep you in control, you're still in control. Um, it's just a different process for you.
I wonder if that almost leads to if we do letters as a, like, as a series to have that first letter say, there's gonna be a series of these coming that talk about individual topic.
Yeah.
And this is what the genesis of it was.
Exactly, why are we looking at this town meeting? Hmm, I could write that one if you guys want. There were some Facebook comments, and I did respond to people, because they were like, they're trying to run this down our throats, and I was like, this isn't on the warrant, it's just a sense of the meeting and.
Yeah, well, there's definitely.
And they said, oh, this is, you know, the Slough Board really wants this, and the planning board wants this, and all that, and I said, actually, this came about from a citizens' warrant article. So, you know, there are the, and these were people that are regular speakers at town meeting, so I thought it was important to kind of just respond to them. So maybe that's the best way to, to start about how it started and.
That sounds good.
Well, that's, that's individually, like, you, you went to the Scotts Gazette and engage with people. I think that's fine, I mean, honestly.
Oh, I was just responding to some people on Facebook about that, yeah. No, I just said it was a letter from us, if we start about the genetics, you know, why we're here, why we're doing this, why we're putting out this draft, and why we voting on this, as a sense of the meeting and town meeting.
And I think even part of that, right, the end is over the next few weeks, there's gonna be more letters that talk about aspects that are changing. Aspects that are changing in the proposed charter from the existing system, so. Keep reading the newspaper.
I'm slightly concerned that. I don't think all the letters should just say Town Council Study Committee. I, I think, for example, my letter, I should sign as Curtis Barnes, rather than, yeah, member, but. I don't think we should homogenize it so that everything is signed by the Town Council Study Committee, so you should write your letter. With your name on it, I'll put my name on it, Joe will put his name on it. You can identify yourself as a member, but I'm, I'm a little concerned about, you know, homogenized. Every letter is a council. Miscommunication, I prefer to have individuals, you may not agree with everything I say.
I think that's imperative that we sign our name as an individual who's representing the Town Council Study Committee.
Well, that's.
We're talking about doing letters, I think, from the full committee, is that right, Joe, or did you just want it to be like from the chair or just from?
No, I, well, I was, I was actually, I'm sorry, Jill, I was, I was thinking along Curtis's lines, I think they ought to be individually signed letters. You can certainly tell people you're a member of the committee, but, no, I, I wasn't thinking about them as letters from the committee, I was thinking about them as letters from the individuals. Anybody have any ideas for someone outside of? Again, I. I, I can't think, you know, you know, Dan Drake is the only one who, who sticks in my head because I think at one of our full info sessions last fall. Dan was a video attendee and he, you know, made sort of an editorial comment during the meeting that was, you know, supportive of the idea of Town Council. It would be, I just think it would be nice if we had someone other than, you know, our group. Who said, gee, I've, you know, I've heard about this, this process, I think that this might be a, a good direction for the town to go in, and I think that. Because of A, B, and C, and, you know, Joe Smith, citizen here on Nantucket.
How, may I suggest to, Joe, what about somebody from the ACNVT? Like Peter Halli or something?
Interestingly, I had a conversation with Steve Pearlman, who is just letting everybody know. Donna connected me with a member of the NC, of the Non-Voting Taxpayers Group. And he, Steven rather, has a pretty, pretty broad history in PR and marketing. We had a nice chat, had, his actual, his reaction was, if, if you do anything, don't have a member of the Non-Voting Taxpayers. Write the letter, because he, he felt that, you know, that would probably inflame some locals rather than. Good, so, but I. I, I, you know, to be honest, I just think it would be nice to have someone other than us, you know, who are the obvious partisans on this idea, so.
I think, just to throw it out to the group for discussion, I mean, that could be part of. Especially that kind of initial letter could be something that just simply, a little bit of a, I don't want to say. Open challenge may not be the best word, but to say if you have questions or are supportive or send your letter in and. See what happens, I mean, we're gonna get them anyways, they're gonna go.
I got three people in mind that I'll reach out to right away, Curtis.
Yeah, and that's, I mean, we, we all have people that can do that, but I don't think it hurts to. Put it out into public discussion and see what comes in, it'll identify questions and. I mean, not everyone's gonna think it's the greatest idea ever, and I think that's fine to see what their questions and concerns are.
I mean, I, I think it's worth remembering that, on that Nantucket Civic League panel, Mary Jo Henneke, who, who Donna just cited. I think she reported that when they had their, their, you know, their vote in their final representative town meeting. It passed, but it passed fifty-five to forty-five, so I mean, I think that, you know. I think this could, this probably will be a close vote either way, so.
Barstool passed two thousand yes and two thousand no. It's not a hundred percent for nothing, it's a majority.
At any rate, I, I just, just a couple of notes, Jeff, to throw, I mean. For the, we have these three user sessions, and as you all know, we have this PowerPoint that we've been using at, at our various. Communications and outreach sessions that we've had over the last nine or ten months, I'm happy to sort of. You know, update that as I did for the Nantucket Civic League, so that we've got something to, to work from, if anybody else has any. Any points, any issues they think are worth adding into that presentation, please send them along. I assume that we would use the same sort of crew that we've used in the, in the sessions in the past, so. Jeff and maybe Caroline and I at the, at, up at the front of the room and a couple of folks who've got the time to. Sort of be in the audience and keep an eye on things, keep track of things. And then the second thing I'd note I made to myself is I'll, I'll finish the letter that I wrote and try to get that to. You know, out to the, the three papers, if you will, in the next couple of days, and then that, that sort of opens the field for anyone else who wants to get their letter. Out there, you know, maybe in the next week or two.
Well, girl, I would really like it if we could have, you know, the whole committee come and we're gonna only do these things for an hour, we're doing it in a. Punchy way over the course of about, what, a week or ten days or something? So I think it's, I think it would be good to try to get everybody to come. And be the committee for the information sessions.
Oh, everybody, yeah.
I think I just heard Joe say maybe it would just be two or three.
I, I was, I was thinking, currently just to, to speak, well. I, I'd be happy to have everybody show up, don't, don't get me wrong, I just didn't, didn't, when we, when we did the sessions in the fall, there were three or four of us sitting at the. At the ta- the table in the front of the room and other folks were sort of scattered in the audience, so. Sorry, I didn't mean to say that we shouldn't have everybody, but.
I was at the back checking people in.
Yeah, I think it's mainly.
We're all, we're all on duty.
Yeah, yeah.
Report.
Anyone else have any other comments on, on outreach?
Joe, are you gonna go talk to the Finance Committee again?
Am I?
Yeah, we're not really meeting again, we're meeting tomorrow and then we're sort of done with votes, but we usually.
I, I, you know, I haven't heard anything from Denise, I'm clearly, if she would like to, you know, hear from us, I'd be happy to. Come to a meeting, but I don't. I mean, certainly the non-binding vote doesn't require any particular action on the part of the Finance Committee, right, so.
No, it doesn't, I just didn't know if you'd plan to and maybe. Well, we're meeting tomorrow, I can at least tell everybody that we're gonna put a draft of the Charter. And they could read it that way, that's good enough.
You're meeting on Zoom.
Yeah, but we, this should be up probably.
Jill, Jill, if you think that's, that, that, missing that is, we've missed something by doing that, I'm happy to reach out to Denise and. You know, if you don't have any meetings, I don't know how to, how we, you know, reach them, but. I'd be happy to come and talk to, talk to the group.
No, it's that. They, I remember Chris Lwacki saying like he didn't. He'd be happy to talk about that at FinCom, but he wanted something to react to, and honestly, it was only today that we have this draft. Charter that we're willing to share publicly, so I think I'll just tell the committee tomorrow, like, if they do want to hear from. You or from us or do a joint meeting or something, that's fine, because we do oversee the warrant, but. You know, the, this, let's give them a chance to read it online. And then if people want to. Have, if they have questions after that, they can talk to you, or, you know, Denise could put together another meeting if we had to, but I guess it'd be they, they won't. And I would suggest that we get it to the, make sure that the Planning Board has it too, because. Their job is very different.
We can get that out and around. All right, any other thoughts on outreach before we move on? We're zipping through the agenda today, so. All right, well, the, the last thing before German are on our agenda, are there any public comment or questions? You can say no, it's okay. So, all right, anything else for anyone else? Nope, all right, seeing none, except for, all right, first one's a German, Jill seconds. All right, I'll have a Curtis.
Hi, Jill.
Caroline? Joe?
Hi.
Kelly? Tom, all right, and Jimmy, all right, our meeting is adjourned, thanks everybody.